All right, welcome everyone to our Fayette County Commission meeting, February the sixth, two thousand and twenty five. First, we always get started with our pledge and Kevin Burgess, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? This morning, we're going to start with a a special certificate of honor. I received a call from Melinda Foster concerning the recipient. And every time that I speak with my father, he always tells me about this lady. You know, Betty Burgess taught me in Sunday School classes. And my father is eighty-two. So he was very excited when I told him that we were going to give certificate to Ms. Burgess. And he kept reminding me, you know, she taught me in Sunday School classes. So it was a big thrill. So I'm asking Commissioner Taylor if she would please read the certificate.
The certificate of honor is to recognize Betty Lee Burgess. On the occasion of her hundredth birthday and recent designation of Fayette County Centennial Teacher of the Year. The Fayette County Commission would like to honor Ms. Burgess. Ms. Burgess was born on August nineteenth, nineteen twenty-four to Clifford and married Stenett of Prudence, Fayette County, and married Kenneth James Burgess on April twentieth, nineteen forty-three, while Kenneth was on leave from service in the United States Air Force during World War Two. The Burgess has welcomed daughter Kenny Lee and son Kevin, be their home in Oak Hill, West Virginia, then Lexington, Kentucky, finally settling in West Virginia in nineteen sixty. Mrs. Burgess is a lifelong educator, beginning at a young age as a Sunday School teacher. She received her college teaching degree alongside her daughter graduating together in nineteen sixty-seven. The Burgess's return home to Fayette County settling on their family farm near Sanger, while Mrs. Burgess continued teaching at Collins Middle School until her retirement in nineteen eighty-nine. The Fayette County Commission recognizes Mrs. Burgess for her faithful years of service and commitment to the education of generations of Fayette County minds, the sixth day of February, two thousand and twenty-five.
So Kevin, if you want to come up and
do the shaving tape. I've known Kevin a long time and I didn't know this person. It's almost a hundred years old. That's remarkable.
And thank the family and people's state kind of board of education coming in. We really appreciate it. And if you guys are tied up, you can leave or you can stay.
I don't recommend it.
If you see that you're getting educational leave first half for local government.
I would like to go on the record to say that anyone that's turning a hundred years old, I would like for the commission to recognize them. I think it's a good thing. We need to do more of that. And at this time, the Fayette County Commission will now meet as a Board of Equalization and Review. Tara, do we have anyone's percent voice today?
We do. We have one that I'm aware of. That's the only one I'm aware of unless there's someone in here that didn't think this notice.
Okay, and we also have Mr. Wagner from the state.
Yes.
Right, so you want to come on up and say and state your name and
My name is Philip. Westlake, I represent Harwood Properties, Johnson, Lance and a federal colony. I believe I've given everybody a copy of the letter. It's not so much I'm objecting to the amount. It's just I think they're way too bullish. I think there's a statement somewhere. Karen and I have talked. She's already fixed Johnson lands. And I think the same thing needs to be applied to Harwood Properties. That it needs to be looked at and I need a total of what it actually is.
Okay. Anthony. Yes, do you have any input on this?
Well, my understanding of the situation is based on using this letter. He's here primarily to find out from the state what the new appraisals for his property are. And to protect his potential right to object, he filed the appeal and part of the logic in speaking with Eddie and Tara about it, part of the logic of him preparing for a commission was to compel the state to send somebody to this meeting so that they can shed some light on why exactly Mr. Riston and his and the companies that he manages property for haven't been able to get the amounts with the new appraisals.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, do you have anything to add?
My colleague here, Lori Freeze, has I know some of the information. I think she was talking to Mr. Wilson yesterday. I think there's some of the information I think they showed. Trying to
Okay.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Lori Freeze. I'm the geologist of the State Tax Division. Thanks for having us today. We have talked to Philip several times trying to rectify this. One of the things I see on my end, we'll go to the very first one, Harwood.
Yes.
So that on the side of the minerals, natural resources that I have access to. To the assessor, I'm here with the very first parcel. We, one natural resource, it's timber, no coal, gas, other quarries, nothing like that. And it is listed on our side of the database and it is listed on the assessor's side of the database. From my perspective, on the reports I can see, and we do share that database with the assessor. And when I log onto their site, it looks like the land appraisal is missing for the year so far. And that's an ignorance of mine. We don't deal with land. I don't know where, when there was land last year to the two seventy-two hundred dollars. It is zero right now. I'm unsure when that gets applied. Who applies it? That's out of our purview in our office. So that seems to be the issue. Something that's simple, I believe so far. And if that, once that's rectified or answered, if it's not, I will get into it further and see where that number for any missing numbers or triple check what we've already double checked. That's my suggestion is that states side has one thing and one thing only at two hundred one hundred and thirty-four dollars and it is showing up on the assessor's side of the database so far. It's gonna be a glitch. It could just be a timing issue or it could be recommendation is
I don't think so. So what happened with that parcel was he was approved for managed timber and when you were approved for managed timber, we go in on our side and remove the land value and then you want to enter the managed timber value. I relit those this morning, which fixed the three, four and sixty-three. It should have fixed parcels two and three as well. So we will have to look at that.
When I saw that managed timber was on it, we have another person at our office that handles timber and I know that last week, September had become unlinked is what we call it. Our side and the assessor's side didn't match up. And so I took this to her and I said, hey, was this on your list? And she said that these parcels were not in the program any longer. Were in the program?
They were on the list because Eddie and I checked them with Philip last week. They were all on the list.
So I did speak to her and there was some kind of timber something that flip-flopped a little bit easier, which could explain
Okay.
some of this.
So let me get this straight. You're saying that there's not there's no, there's not no coal there. There are just no coal owned by Harwood and their properties, no coal value, no coal mineral. We're only dealing with timber. That would be a value or land value.
Okay, and you say Johnson was taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, so Johnson lands is clear. Okay, what about Imperial?
There's two different, two different mineral values. If you look at the NR one twenty-seven report that I get, it's valued at one million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty. The NR one forty-two report though has it at one million nine hundred ninety-three. I didn't know which it is.
Does the state have a
She's looking up in, yeah, I believe.
Okay, I got you.
Did we already did we eliminate the fact that the two reports, one reports appraised and one reports assessed? I'm gonna look in the group first.
Tara, I'll wait. You and Eddie are going to take care of the Harwood?
Yes. They should be fixed. Okay, three, four, six, three was correct. Then those are the right ones.
Okay.
You're, you're, you're fairly positive. You can give him a number that he can work with.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we're all on the same page, Mr. Riston. Once you get the numbers, then you're going to make the final decision about whether or not you really want to be here to appeal. Your purpose here today is basically just to get a
And I'm pretty certain that once I get those, I'm good to go. I don't want to report to my clients.
Well, kind of hard now to make an assessment. We don't have the value.
And I know this is strange. Somebody's here arguing that the value's too low. That's probably a push, but
So on the state's side of it, we have two summary screens of all natural resources. I'd like to say that those summary screens validate what this one forty-two report from the state has. The NR one twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-seven one hour which doesn't run all companies, strategic report and underlayered that as well. I'm sorry. I don't know where it pulls from or what's involved in it. If we need our database administrator to tell us where that pulls from, we can. And our side validates the one point nine million that he's got. I might recommend further investigation unless anybody else has knowledge where that other report pulls from. On our side, the number going across, let me check one thing. That seems to be the one point nine million, one point nine nine, three, four, two and twenty-six. One point nine, nine, three four, two and twenty-six.
Okay, so the NR one twenty-seven, he's going to have to wait to hear from you.
I'm not entirely sure. Eddie runs though. Steve is on Zoom. I'm not entirely sure.
Eddie, we hope you're feeling better.
Probably. Let me check. I have a cell phone. Yeah, that's him.
Okay.
Hey, Eddie.
Hi.
Did you
Can you hear me?
Did you hear all of that?
Yeah.
Where does the NR one twenty-seven number come from for Imperial Collary Company?
Where does the number come from?
Yeah, it's, they're trying to figure out the state has the property value, value NR one four-two at one point nine nine three, four oh two twenty. And this other number, they're not sure where that comes from and Tara wasn't sure either. Does that come
Okay. My, my guess would one of them may be dealing with the praise value, which would be the higher one, and the next one would be assess value, which would be sixty percent. Run that number, run that number and multiply the, the one point nine number, run that one times sixty percent and see what you get.
Looks like more than sixty percent to me. Yeah. It's not a
Otherwise, I don't know what, I don't know what that, I don't know what that number is. All I do is, I don't, all I do is run the reports for the clients. I don't know where they get their numbers.
Does anyone with expertise have a suggestion on next steps?
Okay, what, I think what I would do if I were you guys is anyone, any, any of these parcels that you have questions on, I would take them under advisement and give the state a little bit more time to look at these more closely to answer the questions. Now, I'm not talking about a lot of time, maybe to the next meeting. And make maybe call in and, and handle it that way.
Well, Mr. Young, I think we've satisfied the Harwood Properties and I think we have satisfied the Johnson Land Companies. We're only speaking of the Imperial Collary Company. And there's just two entities that have been entered. We just want to know which one is the correct number, which the state, I believe, is working on it right now. They're just unfamiliar with the NR one twenty-seven. We're just, we're confused with the NR one twenty-seven. The state is familiar with the NR one four-two.
Right, well, like I said, we, all we, you know, we don't have a whole lot to do with the in the assessor's office with mineral valuations. You know, we link it. Once they, once they tell us to link it, we run this report and it links it. And then when, when the, when the taxpayers call in, they want these reports run so they can tell what these values are. I don't know where those values coming from. I hate to be, I'm not trying to be play dumb, but that's just, you know, that's just not in my, in my realm of expertise.
I know Danny for not as long as I've been doing this for twenty-five years. He's always seemed to be here. So sorry to my here that there is one other option that the taxpayer didn't avail itself. So since it looks like I'm down to just one parcel. He can look through all of any kind of appeal and stop with the Board of Equalization Review and file an appeal with the Western Office of Tax Appeals by the end of I want to say it's March thirty-first. But they'll quote me on that. They changed, they changed the date, but I believe it's March thirty-first. I mean, you can file it today. It doesn't have to be anything formal. I mean, you can just write on it, be a or my property tax on whatever. Martin, we get it, you know, Fayette County. Send that to the Office of Tax Appeals. They was unable to schedule that. And that's going to get you more than enough time. I mean, that would be two months worth of time to discuss it with, with my goal people in the property tax division and see where that number and if you still disagree, you'll, I mean, you will have a hearing at the Office of Tax Appeals. You know, six months from now. Like I said, it's not so much I'm disagreeing. I think the one point nine million is what it was last year. The one point eight would be lower than last year. I can object to that. I just want to know which one to use. Nine, but again, I I don't know where that, that one twenty-seven number is coming from either, so. And, you know, if y'all need more time, you know, a week or two weeks to look it over. The next couple of days, but like I said, if we need a lot more time, you can always file an appeal to the Office of Tax Appeals after that. If you define this.
What if we postpone this to our next meeting on the twelfth, which is next week? That'll give them enough time to finish and if they don't have an answer you're satisfied with, then, you know, if they do, we'll dismiss the appeal and if, if they don't, then we'll
If I can answer by then, I'll definitely call and say I don't need to be there. I'm happy to call that.
And we will just move the Imperial Collary Company back, not the other, not the Johnson Land and the Harwood Properties. They're going to be satisfied.
Yes.
Okay, I, I have a Go ahead, Eddie.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Sorry.
I on, from my perspective, I would like to have this solved before the Office of Tax Appeals because they meet, they do things after our books are shut down. And then valuations are changed after the books are down. And if it's, if it's very big, we have to recertify our values, which delays everybody on doing their budgets. Or we have to do an exoneration after the tax ticket comes out. So we would prefer that that be taken care of. If it's just one parcel, then we should be able to get that taken care of before the Office of Tax Appeals.
Well, we're hoping to have it resolved by our meeting next week on the twelfth. And, and then he can appeal with the state after that, depending on what happens.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, all right, so
Mr. Silber, Mr. Taylor, y'all all right with this?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to move that we postpone the matter of the Imperial Collary Company to our next meeting of the Board of Equalization and Review on February twelfth at nine AM.
Second. Okay, we have a properly moved motion and second, any discussion? Others in favor, send them by.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Tara, do we have anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion to recess the Board of Equalization Review until two twelve twenty-five at nine AMs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Let's see here where we're at. Guys, we're, we're sorry. We're behind a little bit, but we got to get through this and
Would be active Southern West Virginia?
Yeah. Well.
Because we're already talking.
Yeah. So let's go ahead to active Southern, active Southern West Virginia. Are, are you representing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll make this quick. Go over the facts. We've already presented an application for requested funds, so. I'm Melanie Seiler, the Executive Director with Active Southern West Virginia. This is Brandon Malyer. He is our Director of Programs and Events. And we put in a request for sixty-five hundred dollars to help our organization to purchase timing equipment. In doing so, then we can alleviate costs for a contract service company to do timing for us. We can take it in-house, reduce our margins and therefore put more of our race persons back into the free programs. So we do elementary school run clubs for kids that are free for participants, our community captain programs, offering physical activity programs of all different varieties for community members. And what else? I don't have a mind note. This is ten years of the organization and this is our first request with Fayette County Commission to support our our organization. We know you have a lot of priorities to manage and deal with. But we feel we are an asset to the residents and the tourists in Fayette County and we really want to grow our race events. Brandon does an excellent job managing those races with us and he can share a little bit more about the economic impact of our races.
Thank you. So one of the other benefits to Fayette County is the expansion of the local races and the economic impact it'll have here. So owning time equipment will allow active to host more races and free programs, additionally keeping race prices at affordable price for residents. In two thousand and twenty-four, active SVA races contributed three hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars in economic activity in our region, averaging around two hundred fourteen dollars per racer. And race participation has grown significantly from two hundred twenty-one participants in two thousand and sixteen to one thousand two hundred forty-three in two thousand and twenty-four. That's a growth of approximately four hundred sixty-three percent from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-four. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we had a hundred fourth Fayette County residents participate in our races, demonstrating strong local engagement and potential for future growth. So in conclusion, we are requesting sixty-five hundred dollars because it aligns with the Fayette County Commission's priorities by foster and health and wellness, increasing community participation in physical activity and strength strengthening local economic impact. The investment in race timing equipment ensures a long-term sustainability for community races and fitness initiatives in Fayette County. Thank you.
Look, let me ask, let me ask Mr. Tyler. You have several races that you, 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 you you host.
Yes.
What's your average participant at race and that race? How many people you, you have?
Those very greatly. We have, and I'll give you a schedule of twenty twenty-five. We have two races that exceed five hundred registrants. That's the rim to rim race in May, originally five K in October. We are now building out what we call our tier-two races and those average about a hundred to two hundred participants. And so that's Wolf Creek Trails, Thurman Triathlon, Ugly Sweater, Ron at Fayette County Park, and we do a fins-up five K at Lip Students.
So your, your request is for timing. So you can you know, judge who, who does what. It's hard to, two hundred people, it's hard to do it off stopwatch. Now you're doing your timing now.
We pay for a timing company, Appalachian Timing Group. They started a base rate of seven hundred and fifty dollars a race and then it's per person charges on top of that. So when we're launching a new race, because when we have these tier-two, we're trying to develop and we get a hundred participants, we're losing money, not to mention our time and efforts in that event. So we're we need to bring it in-house so we can reduce that cost. Then we can grow these other races and start to add on more. We can even experiment with other venues and start to cultivate more races because we don't have those margins to try to make up.
Well, I mean, I support your program. And I was just telling Greg as we came in the door, I knew in the time I've been here, you haven't asked for a thing. So I knew that we approved the sixty-five hundred dollars to purchase the race equipment. I do want to commend you on your application. I mean, it had, we had blood recommendation from the Health Department, then our GRDA and WBU Extension, which was impressive. I mean, I haven't, we haven't had a funding request as well prepared in a long time.
So we've got quotes out there. So we're still shopping, getting consultation on exactly which equipment to purchase. So
I, I second the motion.
Okay, we have a properly moved motion and second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say go aye.
Aye.
Melanie, I would also like for you to come back in May to give some details of what you guys have to offer.
Okay.
So that our citizens will have a better understanding of what they could possibly be doing, pickleball and all the other stuff that I know that you guys have been
That would be great. We're almost finished with our two thousand and twenty-four annual group that covers the whole scope of the organization. So I'll send that to you via email to digital file. But if I could attend via Zoom, I could shoot slides and really show programs, graphics and, and get some information out really precisely for Zoom and Mac.
Okay, and I'll put in a request to get your schedule for May.
Okay, as long as it's not a race week.
Okay.
We can let you pick.
It's not the first week.
We can, we'll give you the meeting schedule and let you pick when you go.
That sounds great. I really appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. All right, have a good one. Be safe going back. Okay. We have a couple of minutes. Assessor has left. Okay, guess we didn't have any. Vouchers and invoices?
I don't have any questions or concerns.
Okay.
I move that we approve vouchers and invoices.
Second. Got a motion properly moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You approve vouchers being.
Yes, yeah, that's enough.
Okay. All right, minutes?
I move that we approve minutes. For January.
Second.
Okay, we have motion probably moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the state settlements.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um wow. We've got a little bit caught up. It's not thirty. All right, um Ms. Taylor is here. How are you? Good. All right, um Allison, you want to go ahead and start us off on this one, you and attorney had a chance to discuss it.
Uh well, the reason we we scheduled meetings with several of our public service districts, and we also hope that um hope to follow up on these meetings with public meetings in the communities where these public service districts are located. Um but the reason is, is um as we all know, West Virginia American Water has been making moves toward acquiring public service districts around the state. And I believe personally that the system is set up to fail the public service districts because as soon as an action is filed before the Public Service Commission, then the Public Service District cannot avail itself of all the grant funding it worked hard to receive. And then that's on hold while these long dramatic hearings play out in uh Charleston. And then usually at the end, West Virginia American Water ends up on top. Um West Virginia American Water approached Fayette County Commission. Uh I don't know if it was our last meeting or meeting before that. Do you remember what?
Meeting before.
I think on the January twenty-second meeting and um because it was discussing contract negotiations with, which is permissible to be done in executive session, we did that in executive session. Um after that meeting, we had our attorney request permission from West Virginia American Water to release the handout given to us in that executive session to the public service districts so they could consider um what we were being presented. And so today's meeting, the intent of today's meeting is to discuss that with the public service districts. Um so today is Armstrong Creek's turn. We didn't want to do them all on the same day because we thought it would be cumbersome. And um we'd like to hear from Armstrong Creek about um what it has to say about the proposal and and where what its position is. Is there somebody here representing Armstrong Creek?
Yes, David Hannam, Council for Armstrong Creek, and to my left is Greg Tony, who's the Chairman of the Board of Public Service. Is anyone else?
Yeah, I had two other commissioners coming for the, the, they have a lot of water problems, so they're coming up for those.
Did they? How do you spell your last name, Mr. Hannam?
H A N N A.
Oh, Hannah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I don't have my hearing in, so I can. Okay, so do you want to wait until your other board members are here?
We'll let David represent. And everything for me, I have to find that's like. They just want us, you know, come up with, oh, I told them it's necessary.
Well, I'll take a minute to thank you for serving on that board because I know that at one point we had one board member and then no board members on that PSD board. And and those of you who stepped up, I mean, we really appreciate it. You know, it's not, um I know it's very difficult to understand everything if you haven't been involved in that stuff. Um I'm still learning every day on that stuff. So to not understand it and then have to go in with nobody left, you know, I I can't imagine how you got up to speed.
Since I took over, given personally accomplished everything that public service woman has to do, but we beyond what the public.
I'm not surprised, but thank you.
We also have Leslie Taylor from Region Four. Uh and we have some people from P S C. Right? How are you?
Fine.
Good, good. Uh so staff positions, uh of course, anybody from P S C cannot make any comments uh on any pending cases. So just to make you aware of that. See, I listen quite well when when I'm at the meetings. All right.
I guess I could complete what I said that we, the P S C was kind enough to postpone a hearing at our request. Because the hearing was set for January thirtieth in Montgomery. And we wanted to have the opportunity to reach out to the PSDs and to the public before um acting on uh West Virginia American Water's request. And the P S C had had already postponed that meeting once, waiting for us to do that. Um but the reason nothing happened is the proposal didn't come in until a week before. So we didn't have time to do our diligence and talk to the people that we represent and and get their opinion. So that's the reason it's been delayed another sixty days.
And we'd like to thank them for doing that and give us an opportunity to speak with each of the PSDs. And while we're waiting, I and I'm not going to speak for the other commissioners, but I will speak for myself. And and our whole goal is, and I and I appreciate the turnout. There's there's several uh here that have interest, vested interest, or a a interest that we provide our citizens with clean reliable water. That 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 should be our our main goal with everyone in mind. Our main goal is our 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 citizens and that they do have clean water. That they have, and and it be reliable. But I don't think that's too much to ask. Does anyone have a problem with any of that, so?
You can go ahead. They they just will say, and I think they'll make a.
Yeah, by that, I was going to make some comments on behalf of Armstrong.
Could you step up to the microphone, please? So that people on Zoom can can hear you. Or at least as best as they can. They still have trouble hearing us.
Yes, uh thank you, Commissioner. And again, I'm David Hannam, uh Council for Armstrong Creek Sewer. Um I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. Uh when I was retained to represent Armstrong, uh it was prior to the uh order having been issued by the P S C designating them as a distressed utility. Uh but and and since I was brought on board, we were preparing for the October week uh in Montgomery, which was ultimately continued uh on notion of the uh County Commission. Uh we had submitted a testimonial uh from Mr. Tony, as well as Jesse Linville, the uh class two operator that they have on staff there, who they're looking to hire full-time, but kind of need the distressed designation to be released before he can devote himself fully. He wants to be here on on time. And since he was hired, he's done um a lot of work, a lot of routine maintenance that had needed to be get caught up on and really just taking a look, the walk of the whole system and take care of any operation, operational concerns. Uh but what I wanted to uh uh point out about the commission order designating Armstrong as distressed was that it was really based on uh managed, the ma- the situation of the management at the time, and that they had no board members. Um well, at that time, I think Mr. Tony had been added as a board member, but was the only board member. But since uh since I was retained and since that October hearing, they've got a full board, all three commissioners. So really that uh concern of the, from the management situation has been resolved. And Armstrong's position is they want to continue serving their customers, keep the jobs local, uh keep the service local uh at probably half the cost of what uh rates are going to be if Western American Water takes over the system. The the two other uh categories in which the commission evaluates a uh system for being distressed is operational, financial, and they uh specifically stated that they reviewed Armstrong's financial condition, did not reveal a public service district that was financially impaired. And as far as operational, so the evidence presented at the uh hearing had revealed no immediate quality or strategic complaints from Armstrong's customers. So what they really need to do, and what Armstrong's asking for, is that designation of distress to be lifted so they can get the funding they need to do a sanitary survey, survey. They've got E L Robinson ready to do that. Um and that will identify any sort of capital projects that the system needs. There's not, uh the system is working, it's operating well, and with the current staff they have on there, they're maintaining it well. Um so the concerns are really down in the future, down the road, what identifying what projects that they may need and then being able to seek funding. They uh the recommendation, P S C staff, as well as the commission, they had filed a rule nineteen A rate increase case at the P S C. Um after uh the P S C staff made their analysis, the recommendation was that they withdraw the case because if they had gone through, they probably would have gotten a rate reduction. Um they're in a pretty good financial standing right now. They've got a cash working capital account of I think I've got, uh as of the end of December thirty-first, of nearly twenty-seven thousand dollars. They've been able to, they're adding their seven percent um uh per month for the customer collections. So that fund is continuing to build up. The reason I think they had the uh uh you got to have a rate reduction is because they had a debt obligation that they had paid off. So they had, now they have that money. So they no longer needed the increase. So they're doing well financially and operationally. They just, they they want to continue. They need to get that designation lifted of being a distressed utility so that they can continue and uh seek funding for uh projects that they may need to do.
Sir, can you tell us what their average bill is right now?
Uh I did some crude math. I believe it was about forty-four dollars roughly.
About thirty-three.
For thirty-three dollars as uh I think it's based on an average bill of thirty-five hundred gallons maybe. And I believe Western American Water's bill is maybe eighty-some dollars, eighty-eight dollars.
So for the people of Fayette County that are listening in right now that that have an interest, who designated them as a distressed PSD?
Uh the Public Service Commission did.
So the county commission did not do that.
Correct.
Public Service Commission.
Correct. And and it's our decision that it was based on uh evidence that they had the time without having a fully functioning board, which has been resolved and argued as there's no other reason to keep them distressed this time.
Were there any findings by the P S C with regard to why they've they found the PSD to be distressed?
It was from a, from a, uh generally from a management position where they didn't have a fully functioning board to really be able to operate.
So that was what the finding said. It had nothing to do with anything else.
Well, they they did point out some things that they needed to, uh they didn't have a cash working capital account at the time, so they needed to fix that, which they have. And they've been putting money into that. But um I uh just what I, as I quoted earlier, uh with respect to financial and operational, um they determined, the commission determined, or the Public Service Commission determined, right, Armstrong's financial condition did not reveal a public service district that was financially impaired. And then the quote I pulled out about their operations was that the evidence presented in this matter has revealed no immediate quality of service issues or complaints from Armstrong's customers.
Was this after West Virginia American Water repaired the water? That finding, because I know that they did have issues before where where the customers didn't have water for two straight holidays and.
This was just with respect to the sewer. And that word, this order, we're talking July, this was the.
Only with respect, so we're only talking about the sewer service and we're not talking about the water.
Correct.
Okay.
West Virginia American Water has already been granted the privilege of taking over their water system.
I noted you said you represent the sewer service, but.
Yeah, I'm al- I'm only, uh, yeah, I'm only representing the sewer side of Armstrong.
Now, has the P S C identified any uh expenditures that may be on the horizon for Armstrong Creek PSD?
I don't believe there was anything specific that they pointed out other than saying that there has been a lack of investment in the system over the years, and as systems age, they're going to need some capital projects going forward, but nothing specifically identified. And and then that's, that's why Armstrong's trying to get uh uh money and funding to be able to get it. Surveyed on by E L Robinson to identify those areas that will need um need attention and improvement in the future, but nothing immediate um that they have concerns about.
Yeah, Mr. Hannah, when when they are, the needs are identified, how do they plan on paying for the upgrades?
Uh the applying for funding, project funding, that's the uh I D E C, whatever other grants or sources may be available, working with uh Leslie Taylor and Region Four as well.
Okay. Um have you been at their sites and seen what's going on there?
Not, no, no.
Okay, then. Allison, can we, can you read that? It's one thing. I'd like to go into executive session.
What do you want me to, oh, the reason?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to read because we don't often go into executive session for this particular reason. But I'd like to move, you want to make the motion, and and the the reason is to consider matters involving or affecting the purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction planning, the investment of public funds, or other matters involving commercial competition, which if made public, might adversely affect the financial or other interests of the state or any political subdivision. Um and then, of course, no decisions can be made during executive session.
So I'm a, I'm going to move that we go into executive session.
I I second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
While we're in executive session, we would like to have um Region Four members of P S C, um our attorneys, the board members from uh the Public Service District, and of course, Miss Klein to stay in this room. Everybody else, if you would, please exit. Normally, we go to another room, but this is a little bit larger than we normally go. No, there there's going to be quite a few.
And some. I don't have, yeah.
Okay, so I'm sure we start again. Um if anyone would like to make any comments concerning uh the Armstrong Grace Water System, now is your time to come up. All we ask you to do is speak into the microphone and give us your name. And Amy, we are flashing battery is almost dead.
You want to do that, Wilbert?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, so if you could do that, so anyone listening on the internet can hear you, um it would be greatly appreciated.
Anybody want to make a comment?
So basically, in executive session, we discussed things with PSD board and requested them to write up their their position for us for our full consideration. But we discussed some of the specifics about the PSD and the improvements that have been made since the board has been intact. And um what it thinks it's the strength of its case before the PSD is and and things like that. So um no decisions were made and no decisions are going to be made about this today. Our plan is to Don, you said March, to have the public meetings, and we wanted to talk a TV step maybe about having an apartment.
Yes.
Um for Armstrong Creek. So um we'll reach out to keep you step into the board and figure out when to schedule that meeting. And then if you could get the word out once, we'll do our part too, but we'll do that. So you want to keep on moving down the.
So anything with public comments?
The microphone, right?
We asked for it, and they came up.
Yep.
Okay, well, it's my understanding the budget. Uh the accessory budget being postponed, I know he has the flu, so.
Okay. And did she have any orders to combine or divide or? Okay, all right, we go ahead and go through that one. Ms. Gregory?
Right, come on up.
Hi, honey.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all here. Listen, I don't have the flu, but I didn't have a cold, so I'll try not to share that with anybody this morning. I'm just going to jump right in. Do you all have a presentation?
Um before we get started with these budgets, I want to remind everyone that's presenting to us, this is a presentation. We will first meet your essential needs for your office. Um and then once everyone in the courthouse. Um and then once everyone in the courthouse is done, if we have any extra funding, then we'll go back and look at requests for the extra fund.
Although Teresa does have a funding request for today in addition to her budget. Ruth clarified that for me. I passed why it was listed separately, the part-time driver request, so I'll figure that out.
But then I could do that first, thank you all, while I can explain that. Um back in June, at the Community Corrections Board Meeting. Um there was discussion and they did approve that there was a great need for a part-time driver because we only have one full-time driver. And the case managers and myself, we and program assistants, we share the duties with the. The other driver. It's no longer a second van. Once or twice a week or once a month. It's every day now. We run two full vans. Even if we didn't run two vans. The one man would have to make two trips just to get everybody in. We had more people than would ride on one. And we still have people to bring themselves in. Um we still utilize the bus service when we can. But uh you all know our clients, they don't willingly jump on the bus if they need to. So we don't drag some of them in. They don't come in. So that's the reason I made the fourth mistake of part-time driver so that it would alleviate at least the case manager who's been doing. Five days a week, uh every day, every week, all month for many months now. He's been assuming the short routes for the locals and the folks on the other side of the bridge here as the closer ones. So I'm asking for a part-time driver, thirty-two hours a week or less. Um and I was in for just the other day, but that does require often insurance for that. So that's the calculation I did from zero page two or three over here. It's out. Yeah, down at the bottom.
Did the board vote on on the new driver already? They they did vote to approve to ask to. Have him want to drive it.
Have you found another driver?
No, I have not. Um. Two things. I wanted to make sure all sure that that you all knew that I was want to do that in the budget because even at thirty-two hours a week. And even without insurance, it was quite an expense. It is almost, it's uh. And that's those figures are done at the highest insurance rate possible. But um it's going to be forty-seven thousand five hundred and some dollars for a part-time driver. Per year. And that is. That is going to wipe out. So I'm already operating at like sixty thousand dollars. A year. I know that doesn't seem like much, but when we try strive to be self-sufficient, that's going to add to that. But I have a big ask today. I'm going to ask for other staff also in the rest of the presentation, which I know is a consideration for later. But um I would like you all to consider letting me hire a part-time driver as soon as possible to alleviate distress on the. Program staff there.
Do we have room for that in the in the budget?
I mean, I feel like we could make her and she like with their testing outside of their regular participants. I mean, her revenue is in her.
It worries me that her program manager is driving rather than managing the people who are the participants in your program.
Exactly.
But I just wanted to, I don't want to make an uninformed decision. So you think our budget can accommodate this?
I feel that the improvements that Teresa has made. And the billings have improved. I mean, everything, I I wouldn't feel right if we didn't.
Quality of the program and.
Yeah.
And uh just just so you know, it was it was part of the rest of the presentation. I went and tell you, um two weeks ago, I picked up um. New River Ranch, they want to MOU now, we're going to do there. We started yesterday doing their uh pre-employment and employment drug screens. And then Monday, they called me with another request and I'm going to have to speak with Mr. Silberty about. They want us to take over testing their their clients.
Juvenile. New River Ranch.
And I I don't know what. I I mean, I know we can do it, but I don't know. I'm sorry, juvenile.
I almost talked to Chuck Taylor about that one. Okay, the YRC doing the because they're all juvenile.
Okay. Well, that that's a good idea. They were wanting somewhere close to do that.
Well, I'm just saying, you mean DRC doing it for the kids or YRC? Yeah. I I I mean, we have a youth reporting center. I think think it might be able to do it, maybe cooperate with you.
They they may have reached, they may have tried to work with them. I don't know, but I want to make that recommendation. But at least we will have their employment and pre-employment screening, which is, that's a little money.
Do you have checks number?
No, but I can get it.
I I need to get it from me. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I'll send it to you and then.
Yeah, and they were wanting to pick, they will want me to use a whole day to reek and I thought I think well, please let's put the brakes on that. I mean, it sounds nice. I appreciate it, but. I don't know. So um but anyway, so that's my immediate request is for a part-time driver.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move. We approved that request.
Second, have a motion probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion through.
Thank you very much. Um so back to regular with place. Uh page one is your starting spends and revenue. Um I want to let you see last year's. Maybe actually did cost the county sixty thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars. But with our operating budget and when you deduct the grade and the two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of revenue we got last year. We expended almost sixty thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars. Um yeah, so uh in the. Excuse me. The new budget is right next to that in the box. Uh the operating cost through December twenty-fourth is two seventy-five, six forty-two. This is at the half year. Um and our grant payments through December twenty-four is ninety-eight thousand one forty. Our revenue to that point was one twenty-five, seven fifteen. So we are at cost right now fifty-one thousand seven eighty-seven. So we are right now almost. At the same point as we were when we were last year. But we are costing more, but you'll see later on as we go up the budget sheet, that that isn't surprising materials. A lot of drug screen, lots and lots of drug screen. I'll go ahead and move this in. Um we are, this is our current caseload. I'm on there too. We're we're loaded. We're loaded, loaded. And um we have currently today as of seventy, as of today, seventy participants that we deal with. Either five days a week or minimum one day a week. And that doesn't include the one hundred and seventy-seven referrals for drug screens that we have from DHS, CPS, DHR, CPS. And we see those people maximum three to five times a week and sometimes just one, but that's an additional hundred and seventy-seven people. And that's that's where the street gets jammed up. That's where you see all that traffic coming. So um seventy in the building and a hundred and seventy-seven referrals on the books right now. So like I said, that's why supplies and material cost is up. So that's why we're running at fifty-one thousand as of this point this year. Hopefully, the new revenue source will help offset some of that some as well. In addition to that, we just uh. About three weeks ago now, two and a half weeks ago now, we started uh using a new GPS home confinement monitoring service. Which is one dollar less a day per bracelet. Then the old company's charged. And I know that sounds kind of miniscule, but when you're talking about seventy-seven people, we got twenty-six of them on GPS today. That's twenty-six dollars a day. That's a hundred, two hundred dollars a a week. That's seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
How much less a day?
A whole dollar. A whole dollar. So it's uh. It's uh less than four dollars a day now. Yeah, it was a whole dollar cost.
I know that we and I I know Anthony has talked to Public Defender's Office and the judges and I have a couple of times, but. But we have offered because the jail bill is how much a day? Fifty-two something or?
Fifty-seven.
It's a lot. So if there's somebody who's eligible for bond who can't afford it, the county commission has offered to pay for their GPS monitoring if they're indigent. And if they're are being represented by the Public Defender's Office. So so they don't have to, so they can have some rehabilitation and not go to jail unless they need to be in jail. The judge will decide that.
And not only not only is it cheaper, but it's a much better system. Um I won't go into too much detail, but our old system only operated on cell six, cell tower signals. So there's a lot of dead areas in the county. You all know that, um but you get no cell reception at all. This new system, it is so high-tech, it operates from Wi-Fi. If they're driving by somebody's house in a dead area and they just happen to have a Wi-Fi router in their home, it can ping off of that. So we get data points in dead areas that we never ever saw before. It's amazing. And it it's amazing. They have built in. Uh they have built in batteries, internal batteries that last up to two to three hours while we're actively uniting stuff goes in. That means retrieval rate, recovery rate, if one's been cut, it's like a hundred percent. We just did it day before yesterday with recovered bracelet that had already been dead. So. Um that that's pretty good. That's those are units are fifteen hundred dollars a piece or more. So. Anyway, we're making some strides in the GPS. Uh and you'll see that a GPS home confinement. Uh officer, technician, whatever you want to call them, that is further on in my budget. So uh we went over the expense and revenue, the jail bill savings you see there. I know that the rate is not forty-eight, twenty-five a day, but just saying it was. I know there's a sliding scale now. I don't know how to figure that, but um it's significant savings. Just this first half of the year, if you were calculating the forty-eight, twenty-five, it'd be like seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The day report received seventy-eight new participants via court order referral from July one through December thirty. And so that's the most recent six months, seventy-eight new referrals from court. Um so we're staying at ninety percent higher than it was two years ago with referrals and. Clients, excuse me. So we spent a couple of years getting our feet on the ground and we spent a year um operating. At a very, very increased level of. Of um. Work and supervision and support services there. The next two pages in here are literally just the um. The account summaries from the first one, two hundred and forty-one thousand. That was last year's at by twenty-three, twenty-two, our revenue. And then the second one is just through. Well, it was too small, the cause is only from January. But anyways, so far through January, the eighth, excuse me, January twenty-eighth, we have taken in hundred and twenty-six, four seventy-five thousand dollars. So we are still at the midpoint slightly above what we were last year.
Yeah.
With December. Um and this is the big one. This chart right here, the grided landscape is a. Is uh our staff and salaries at the top. Uh there's a small proposed increase in there if you all would be considering enough to think about that a little later. Um so that's calculated in the current salary and then proposed increases. And those increases uh are defined right below that first part of the chart there, mid-page. Then the bottom half of the page is the additional staff proposal. And you all have graciously already approved the part-time driver. That is so appreciated by all of us. You you have no idea. And then in addition to that, one more case manager and a GPS home confinement officer. Uh we, like I said, we have twenty-six people on GPS right now. Uh when you consider a regular caseload plus having to watch GPS or some phones. And we're getting those notifications on our phones. We look at them all day and then we look at them all evening at home. So. It's a big responsibility. GPS and that's that's twenty-six people that don't just need services through the center. But and it's screening and and whatever else services we can provide in the center. Some of them are only on home confinement. We still have to screen them, but just keeping up with them. And uh it is pretty involved. Now, we have inclusion zones and exclusion zones and. It's very hot tech and it's a very wonderful tool. So.
Uh what are your priorities with regard to the case manager and the GPS? Home confinement.
I will be a case manager. Because case manager can pull pull duty. I mean, we all stream. We all do case management. We all watch GPS. So. Definitely case manager. Definitely.
So you're not asking for a salary increase for yourself, but you see, I see some of the staff does and the reason is significant caseload increase?
How many cases per case manager do you have? Um it it's right here, nineteen, nineteen. Uh myself is nine plus five. People have six that are just left to do payment, nothing else. And then twenty-one, so approximately.
Optimally, how would you like that to look?
About half because substance abusers, and that's ninety percent of what we deal with are um. Labor intensive, for lack of a better term. They require a lot of support, a lot of support. And I attribute most of our success to the grass, Ruth's kind of approach we take to um. Communicating with them. Offering supports, not just let them in and out of your office, do your meeting, do your screen and and get them out, but offering and support. Uh the social support that they don't get anywhere else, you know, so. If caseloads were two-thirds of what they are right now, that would be, that would be a significant. Change in the way we operate.
Can can you uh tell me those case numbers again for?
Uh sure. Um nineteen, nineteen. Fourteen and twenty-one. And yes, I'm alone while she's running.
Yeah. Yeah, fourteen turns and the others are. Okay.
Um another reason that I'm requesting some additional help is because. As it stands, required training, staff development and things, those kind of get put on the back burner. We have to often offer the online version or Zoom version, which is perfectly fine. But I'll be the first to tell you, yes, are we jumping up from our desk? Are we muting our microphone so we can go do a test or we can go. Um talk to somebody that uh came in because they needed a little extra support. Yeah, it it's not ideal, but we get it done. But we need to do more. Um. If I could get forty good hours per person a year, it would be tremendous. Right now, we're running about twenty-five or thirty. And I and I don't think that's even everybody. I think that's just case management staff. But I I got a call from number one uh yesterday. They called and offered us to come and do, I guess, some of their in-service. They're going to give a CPR. So. I'm working with them to get that. That's super close and there's something we can do. You know, pretty much everybody, half of us on one day, half of us on another day. We're just running really tight right now, but business is good.
So you you've got contracted services in here of little little increase. Who do you contract with?
Uh well, there's a couple of things we contact. We um we use an off-site uh lab. We use Q Labs in Charleston. This West Virginia-based company to do all our labor. For information testing. So that's one. And then Sentinel GPS Services, that's number two.
And they it it looked small uh increases due to rate increases?
Well, our increase in in services and um referrals, yeah. We haven't gotten any rate increases from them. Thank goodness. Like I said, we did get, we just. Um signed MOU for a dollar less day on our GPS, but that laboratory increases are known. So. So that's good. Can talk about that. So we just.
You guys start having bips yet?
Yes, we do that. Um it's not exactly. It's not the revenue that we were hoping for because a lot of these folks are in the gym and. And a lot of them come from magistrate board. We don't get the referrals from CPS. We went through those fairly quickly. And the ones we were getting for Nicholas County, they're doing their own dibs now. So. That's like, yeah.
Why are you not getting referrals from CPS?
Well, we do, but there are a few of our between. They were, we were getting a lot from Raleigh County and Nicholas County. And that's where we got covered up in the beginning. And now we're now ready to even kill with with our own account. So. But yes, there's a lot of those and mostly in a match where it's where we get those. And that's steady business. And they say, but you know, if we were getting a lot in CPS, that would be for sure billings. We're not going to refuse somebody a class just because they don't have their twenty dollars to pay that day. That's not how it works. And the other thing is um lips was. And previously, we were allowed to do two classes a week. We put that down in like a sixteen-week course. Now the family and uh the Family Protection Services Board, they changed that and they want only one class per week. They want their. They don't want the integrity of their program to be lost in the in the hustle, so to speak. So we can only do one class per week now versus the two we were doing before. So it's it's a thirty-two week program, for sure. Thirty-two classes always on per week. But um so yeah, we offered it online. I mean, I'm just, you know, because I had clients back when Nicholas County didn't have one. Who, you know, really needed because they live so remotely and couldn't get there. You know, I wondered if we offered online because normally you have to get it out of state and I bet we could get it certified. We we do a lot of classes. We do, we do it by. We, we do online services, there, we do, we do it by Zoom. We're not Zoom, but, but Google Team, or Meet, or Google Meet or Teams, she is offering that, we, we have a lady who was. Completely uh. Ordered to, ordered for, she was pregnant, she was stolen off the leave house, so, that's how we did her BIPs, was, was via Zoom.
What if you sent a letter to all of the um. Day report centers? Just any of them in the state that don't have a program, or if you don't know who doesn't, then just let them know that we have one that's built online. Might be able to get some revenue out of it, too.
We're working towards. Yes, I will. I, I didn't think about further away ones, but you're exactly right. There's a lot of counties that don't want to do, but that's the struggle for the Family Services Protection Board right now, is. They can't get very many day reports on board with doing BIPs. And uh, apparently. Apparently. Everybody likes it and wants it to be available, but nobody wants to fool with it, so. We were one of the few that went ahead and did our BIPs training and submitted our manuals for our recertification, but.
We might be able to pick up that business then, because I know before, like, nothing was online except for out-of-state programming, and it was hard to get those through a court. But a state-recognized program through a county day report center that already exists probably would. Get recognized by. A West Virginia court.
That's wonderful. We, we're already doing a few on, online because of that, either transportation issues or. For a while, we were bringing the ones in that were local, we would bring them in one day a week and do their BIPs, because we needed to screen them too, but. Um, that's excellent idea. I'm gonna dive into.
Well, sweet. BIPs is the better intervention program for everybody here, doesn't know what that stands for. Um, but we used to be one of the only ones, at least in this part of the state.
You, you stated earlier that uh, departmental supplies and materials were, and the increase was due to workload increase, correct? It's more than double. Has your workload more than doubled?
Yeah.
It's huge, but before you came. Um, it got to the point where our court, our day report has, had been running so poorly that the courts did not want to refer. Uh, participants to it, and then we hired Teresa, we moved it over here closer to courthouse, and she has turned the program around entirely. Um, and now, you know, magistrates will refer people and the courts are referring people and they're actually getting help. Where before they weren't getting referrals and they weren't getting help. It's, it's changed quite a bit in the past four years.
With a lot of help from the folks over there, like, we really do work hard, all of them.
The good folks over there.
She has a really. She has a very good staff.
I do have, I'm very, very blessed to have one, have.
So Teresa, you said that ten would be an ideal number? If, if you could get to fifteen per caseload.
I'd take it.
Any reduction probably.
Yeah, any, any reduction, because like I said, I know it, it doesn't seem like. Hundred and seventy-seven referrals for drug screens is a lot. Those folks come in there, like I say, some five days, some three days a week. Some hardly ever, but still, that's. It's, it's incredible, the amount of drug streams we did per month. It's astronomical, and, and that's where our revenue is, so we're not. I don't want to slow that down, you know, I'm not gonna do anything to hate for that, I'm not gonna turn anybody away, so. Uh, there was a small decrease in there, we had um. For a couple of years, we have been leaving our um. Our utilities at a fifty thousand a year rate, but that was because of the brand-new building and. The first month or two, the expenses were through the roof, I don't know why, I think the electric bill had changed somewhat, but we got a little nervous. So we bumped that up to fifty, but two, three years now running, um. At way less than that, so I, I bumped that down to eighteen thousand dollars, so from fifty to eighteen thousand, it's not one of the work anymore, we can't. Possibly use any more electricity than we do, that's the. Um, and then, eh, do you all want me to go over those line by line? Uh, the first one, two, three, four, five of those, they're all related to personal. Expenses, and those are the rates that are um. That runs through all this, that, with, with the um. Salary increases if approved for. And then overtime expense. We find off through the time clock, it's just sometimes we, we have a very small overtime expense. Leaving at a two thousand, because we do like beat the clock, trying to get these folks home and get them back here by four o'clock. Uh, or after, shortly after. Our telephone stays the same, uh, utilities stay, uh, reduced. The building equipment and rents is no more, because we're in this building. The contracted services, um, I raised to eighty-five thousand. Even though we're paying a little less, I was giving them buffers on there, because. I think once the courts see how precisely we can use that as a tool now. Um, because it's a much better service, we probably have some uptick in. GPS monitor, as a matter of fact, we have two of them since yesterday. Every day, every day, so. Um, but that's a positive thing, right? That's, that's keeping our jail bill down, and then the departmental supplies and materials, I. I did, I increased that quite a bit, because. That's just where it is, and that's drug testing, that's really nothing else. Uh, last year, we all did buy us new computers and man. That was amazing. We have, we needed a bad link, and everybody has in popular tools now to do their job, and I much appreciate it, so thank you all for that. Um, but that's all I have, that was the. Line by line, so do you all have any questions?
Thank you, did a great job, thank you.
Well, we appreciate all the support you all have given us, you've been wonderful too, so. Anything we can do, just let us know, and I want to check into that. Figure picture of that for on my list. That'd be great, because we had two instructors now, we got that small grant for. Um, the BIPs recertification, and so now we have two certified instructors, which we're supposed to have two by the new standards, so it was kind of a. We had to, we wanted to do this, but.
When did you get those new GPS monitors?
The first part of January, and then we started switching them over.
So that issue we had with Mr. Kincaid.
Oh, that was the. I had been having issues for a couple of months, but that was the kicker, I put them all, that was the kicker. There's no more of that, and it was really neat what we did, we did a trial run with the new companies, we did a test, where they gave us, they sent us units. And they sent us online access for those units, and we put them in our two vans, so we covered the whole, the whole area, the whole county with um. Both bracelets on the different AT&amp;T, the Verizon, all the different services. And then we switched them and let those. Let, uh, the, the units in vans, so they, both units got to see all sides of the county where the dead zones are, so. We had a really, really comprehensive look at where the dead spots were and where they are now.
If we could apply that technology for our law enforcement.
It's amazing.
Cause they still can't communicate.
It's amazing, so, oh, and, and then the verbal commands, you can literally, um, you can send a canned messages, or you can. Plug one in and you can pick whichever voice you wanted to send out, and they're loud and clear, and it does not sound like a robot speaking, they're wonderful, like, they really are.
The case I was referencing, read convicted federal file, they were sentencing, and cut off this monitor. And the way we found out was, the landlord went into the guy's apartment. Saw the monitor, called the Raleigh County Sheriff's Department, and the Raleigh County Sheriff's Department shows up, and then notified us. Us that. He had absconded, and we didn't find out until, I think, seven hours. After he had cut the monitor.
That's when the notice came in, we knew he cut it, because we got the call, but the notice didn't come in over the service. Until several hours later, and that right me, right there was a wake-up call that, that meant that, you know. Anything we were doing, his, his was. In his particular case, the problem, I think part of the problem with that, other than just the bad service, was in an apartment building. You, it's basically an accidental fair day cage, because of all the, the different walls and the plumbing and the metal and stuff, but um. We haven't seen any of that yet so far, and we are watching these things like hawks, because we're nervous that it's, wasn't gonna be. It's better, it's really better, it's amazing. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, thanks, Teresa. All right, um, next we have. A request to approve a plan for proposed new volunteer fire department. And before we get started, I would like to uh. Thank. The people from the association who worked with Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Taylor. And Michael Taylor, and which the Taylors are not connect, are not related. But uh, I want to thank you guys for the time that you put in. Commissioner, thank you very much for the time you put in. And. Um, either I'll let you or them talk about it.
You want me just to tell them the terms? No, I did send it to them, so they've seen it before, but for the public's notice. So, some of the challenges that, that we had had were spending fire levy funds on. Um, the fire training center, which is owned by a private five oh one C three, the Fayette County Firefighters Association. We finally found and sit down and discussing it. Um, a way to have that training center and to be able to fund it with the money. That the taxpayers have put in, co-funding it, um, by creating a Fayette County Volunteer Fire Department. In that location. Um, that would serve, I, I think, we didn't really get into it, but. The service area, I just had proposed all of Fayette, but that's what the fire marshal saw that said. That, um, that it had to have a service area and, and um, Fayette County is what he suggested and made sense to me. So. To further that, um, this fire department would not only. You know, respond to fires, but it would house the special teams of Fayette County firefighters. Swiftwater Rescue, the Vertical Rescue, the Hazmat Decontamination Team. And it would also coordinate um, some of the. Um, responsibilities that used to belong to the fire coordinator. Like the hose testing that all the fire departments need, so we can get bulk rates for those things, so the hose testing and the. What else did you, fit testing and pump testing, and Josh had given me another list. Um, ladder testing, and, and there are just a, a lot of things that the fire departments need, and. And this fire department would be over coordinating, um. To their compliance, basically, with, with all of the rules they have to comply with. The Fire Association currently owns the land and uh, has agreed to lease the land to the new fire department training center for a dollar a year. For a minimum of ninety-nine years, um, the. We discussed possibly transferring the land to the fire department, but there would. Possibly be issues from Brookfield, because it was donated to the Fire Association for a specific purpose, and we didn't want to. Open that can of worms, we wanted to just go with what we have. Um, and I know, you know, between, the Fire Association has possession of. Equipment that County Commission has thought for the fire training center, and it is going to transfer. That equipment to that fire department once created, um, and the Fayette County Commission is going to transfer, and the Fire Association is going to disclaim ownership of. The building that's already on it, so we're going to transfer that to that new fire department, so the fire department will own. Um, everything on the land and all the equipment on the land. Um, and the land will be leased from the Fire Association. So, the. See, um, the, the fire department will have its own fire chief and will be staffed by volunteer firefighters countywide. To get an engine to that fire department, we discussed, and the Fire Association is going to let us know who is due for the next engine upgrade, and when that happens. Um, we talked about, and we're going to have to have a subsequent budget meeting to discuss more specifics on this, and we discussed that this morning, but. But the. Fire department, who would receive the new engine, would be asked to donate the engine that's replacing to the new fire department. And that would be a continuing cycle, any fire department that's getting a new engine, if their engine is better than the one or ones. At the fire training center, then the fire training center, fire department would have the first right of refusal on that engine. Um, and then sell any additional engine it has to go toward the purchase of the one. That's being replaced, or the, the new one. See, um. I asked um, the crew that we met with to. Uh, talk to Ruth at the break about meeting. Gia and Ruth and me, I don't know that Michael has to be present for this, but. And, and the same team, or whatever team they, the Fire Association was put together to discuss. Um, their request for quarterly. Um, budget information and what we need, and how to divide labor between whoever the contract fire coordinator is going to be and. Our office. Um, and Josh had put together at my request a, a draft job description for, for that person or persons. Could be more than one, um, we are going to need to set a reimbursement rate. For that, those individuals, once the new fire department has stood up, which is going to take a few steps that I'll outline here in a second. Once that new fire department has stood up. Um, these contract fire coordinators who are coordinating all this hose testing and stuff, will report to that fire chief at the new fire department. For the time being, um, as a system of checks and balances, I had just requested and recommended that the. Fire chief that that firefighter reports to regularly here in Fayette County. Sign off on the invoice that's submitted to us, so at least there's another person looking at them. And the fire chief's president agreed that that'd be a good idea, and if it's a fire chief, they'll have another fire chief. Take a look at it, just to make sure, um. So. See here, so. The new fire department, we, uh, Michael and I made some calls after everybody left about. Insurance, and we called um, a fire department training center up in Shepherdstown that, that does both. They do, I asked them if they did only classroom or they did practical, and they did both. And they're the ones who said, look, we just got a rider on our insurance for the training center, and that was all we needed to do. Cause originally, we were worried we were going to have to create two more five oh one C threes, one in the form of the fire department and one in the form of the training center. Um, but we have found a way to get around that and make it more simple, simple one, have it all in the one. Five oh one C three, that's want to be the fire department slash training center. So that, that made me happy, because I didn't want, you know, that whole process is cumbersome. One time, um. And. The next step is, once that fire department stood up, the fire department is, the board is going to work with the NRG RDA, I had reached out to Jenna Belcher. Because I know the NRG RDA does a lot of work with writing business plans and helping people get business plans together. The idea here is while the um, county commission would invest the upfront costs in building out. The fire department. And. While we would do that, we don't want to be in a position where we have to sustain. An eighteenth, or a seventeenth, but Station Eighteen is what it'd be called, fire department. For eternity, so, I mean, we'd have some flexibility, the way it's structured, to help when we felt like it was proper. But we also don't want to have to. Get to depend entirely on a fire levy for its support, so. We're going to come up with a business plan, and then we're going to use that business plan to submit for grants, and we're going to also. Hopefully, the business plan will help generate revenue for the fire department through the training center. So that's, that's how we discuss that. Um, necessary next steps. Um, is the Fire Association, firefighters are going to get together, Chief E. Step in particular. Um, to organize the new fire department, so they're not going to have to get the five oh one C three, get it set up. Get it set up through the fire marshal. The fire marshal said that it wanted to. Not to change that one thing that John John said, um. The fire marshal, this plans review division. Um, he said that if you guys, first, if you guys show the plans to them, since it's built to be a fire department already. Um, just get that approval in advance, that way if there's anything that needs to be tweaked, or that's tweaked. Um, so it, so they'll approve it, so you want to get that preapproval done. Um, and I have the list of steps, and I forgot to copy you one. That list, but I will send it to you. So, you know, the, the steps are going to have to do in not any particular order, I mean, they're going to have to create the fire department. Um, they're going to have to identify their fire chief and their board members and their roster. Um, they are going to have to create their bylaws and file all the necessary paperwork to come recognize this five oh one C three. Um, after that, the property transfer needs to happen, Michael's offered to, or um, the lease, to write up the lease. And um. Make a couple of corrections to my paper, um. They're going to transfer the equipment to the new fire department, um, we are going to transfer the building ownership to the new fire department. They're gonna transfer the equipment to the new fire department, um we are gonna transfer the building ownership to the new fire department. Basically, I think we could probably get something together where the Fire Association and the county transfer everything bought for that, that you know, to the fire department, so it's, all of that will be owned by the Fire Department Training Center. After the budget cycle ends, they're gonna work to identify, and they're gonna be doing that now, but they, they've just started doing a review on who gets the next fire engine, and stuff like that, so we'll have more information. It's gonna take six months to a year to build the thing, um so we have a little time, but the more we get done, the quicker, the better, we'll be able to get the school on, it, we also discussed and agree that the truck that we were gonna transfer to a fire department from our um name would go to this new fire department, because that way, these coordinators who are reporting to that fire chief could drive it, if they wanted to drive it within the county to do their coordinator responsibilities. And then, the one holdup that the Fire Marshal foresaw, um and this was Deputy Chief Robbie Bailey, is who we spoke with. He said that he would probably need to facilitate a meeting between the organizers of the new fire department and the auditors and treasurer's office, he's worried that the Fire Commission might not want to fund a fire department from state money in an area that's already has coverage. And so, we could waive that funding, but we don't know that we can waive that funding, so, so that just needs to be worked out with them on, on what the answer is. I mean, right now, you know, we're gonna stand, you know, the levy's gonna cover the first set of things, and we're gonna have a business plan to cover other things. But um, you know, if it's eligible for funding, I think it should get it. If it's not eligible for the funding, then, you know, we need to, in order to get this done, we'll probably have to waive it for the commission to approve this fire department. And that's what, is that what you understood, Michael?
That was my understanding, yeah, but that's a five, when she says commission, she means a five commission.
So, we're just gonna have to figure out what it's gonna take, you know, from them, and you guys have your relationships with them, hopefully, you can leverage to help us get this done. And then, um the new fire department will present its um funding request to us to approve um the building expenses, stuff like that, so it needs to get set up first, and we need to make sure it's set up, and then we'll have a meeting about allocating the money to build the, the building. And after that, they're gonna meet with NRG RDA for the business plan, and that's something that they can while it's being built. So, did I miss anything? Going down the list.
One, one thing, just to make crystal clear, that this new fire department is not designed to replace any other existing fire department. It's solely a supplemental fire department to provide supplemental coverage to all of the fire departments in the county, and um, and also operate the training center. So it's not designed, it, it will not impinge or impede upon anybody's already designated area, or anything like that. We just wanna make that crystal clear, that this, there is no design to replace any fire departments, or forcing fire, fire departments out, or anything like that.
Yeah, thank you, I'm glad you said that, they made that with me, and I forgot.
Solely supplemental, helping uh to the other departments in the county.
Well, and for the special operation teams to have a place to, their, you know, headquarters, and be able to operate out of and train out of. So, I felt like the, the conversations were very productive, we, you know, I, I think we made a whole lot of progress in a very short amount of time. I appreciated everybody coming to the table, and, you know, thinking through this.
We appreciate it, too, we, this was, this is what we've been wanting, we really appreciate it, thank you, each other.
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd like to make a comment on this, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with this, and these are, this is Fayette County, Ms. Taylor took her time out to take, to, to get, come to a conclusion of, of benefit of the people of Fayette County. And these are very, very intelligent people, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for the county that's listening right now. These are intelligent people making good decisions in your behalf. This is not something the fire departments wanted, because they wanted to undertake something, they wanna spend money. There's gonna be work involved, and there's a tremendous amount of work involved. Ms. Taylor went above and beyond to go in and sit down and find out how we can make this happen, how we can through the road for our people, because our fire department's directly involved with the people. If you have an accident, they come, it's raining, they come, it's snowing, they come. Ms. Taylor, and, and this commission recognized the value of our fire departments. It's not that we wanted to spend your money, it is we wanted to spend your money to benefit you, to enhance what these guys do. Ms. Taylor, I, I do, I wanna appreciate you, and Mr. Brenner, I wanna pre- I appreciate you, I wanna send out a great thanks, that you guys have served the people of Fayette County well, and it is Fayette County leading the way, again, we're gonna lead in this state. Uh and I just, I just wanted to say that, to say thank you.
We talked about how broad their mission could expand over time with the business plan, and with our special opportunities, because our, our military special forces train here, for Swiftwater and, and um vertical. So, those are the types of things that I think we could offer, you know, within and outside the state for training. Um and I think that should be part of our business plan, as, as we expand, like, right now, we just have to get moving, but once we expand, I think we can offer those services, and it will bring tourism to Fayette County. Uh I think, when I had asked Josh or John John some time ago, I'm like, okay, well, what, what, what will the training center bring Fayette County, besides prestige, I mean, that's obvious. And the tourist, I mean, we're gonna have people coming here to train, and, and that's, that's gonna bring revenue through the hotel, motel tax, and some other things, so. I do think this is a good decision, um my concerns were through the legalities, and, and we finally, after we put our heads together, we were able to work those out. So, um now, you know, the excess levy won't be going to a private organization that is not a quasi-state organization, which is what this is. So, um anyway, the next steps are, um the group that the Fire Association identifies is going to meet with Ruth and Gia and me, uh at a time Ruth identifies to discuss budget stuff, and um engine replacement, I think, should be a part of that conversation, and also what you need as chiefs from us um on the financial side. And Gia may not wanna do all the stuff Gia's been doing, and that's another thing that's on the table, she sent me four emails yesterday, and I didn't have time to read them all um in response to what should, you know, this, to Josh's proposed position description that I requested, so so we can hammer all that out together, and then we'll similarly come back before the commission and make a decision on it. So for the time being, I'm gonna move that we approve the plan, as I presented and provided to you, um and move forward.
I'm gonna second that one. So, we have a motion, properly moved and second, all those in favor? Okay, um you know what's really cool, me sitting up here in the middle, it doesn't make a difference who's here, it's using the talent of your peoples, and, and uh we got some really talented people, and, and you know, they've got, they've got the opportunity to do things, and I'm just gonna sit here and, and listen, and take notes, and, and just thank them again for what they're doing, so. Alex, thank you. Um guys from the fire department, wow, been a long time, thank you guys.
And Michael Taylor. He did a lot of work on this, legwork, and had a lot of good ideas.
Now, you may be from Canal County, but you, you benefit the people of Fayette County.
Well, his parents live in Somerville.
Yeah, it's closer.
Close enough.
He's got southern West Virginia peeps here.
And the, and the young women, or, or the women of the volunteer fire departments too, because we're not all, just not men, there are, there are a lot of good women that participate in our volunteer fire department.
Here's the greens.
Okay.
Pretty sharp, okay, so next on Ruth's exhibit list is my item.
That's what I was gonna say, Ruth?
Most of these are mine, um so I'm just gonna get on it. For the grant contractor, I wanted to propose, and I mentioned it to both of you individually, but I wanted to propose that Fayette County put out a request for proposals for a grant writer to target the specific projects that we've been trying to get funded, and have not been able to get funded. And, and I think we all have ideas about the things we wanna get funded, but I'll give examples of the ones that I would like to see um covered here, one is the shooting range for the deputies. Um one is, if, if we need it, the fire training center to get further grant funding to sustain that thing. One is our critical infrastructure north of the bridge. I have five, what were the other two? One was, I had a question mark by the Fayette County pool, but I think we need to do something down there, whether it's a splash pad, or do something with the pool. And I have one more that I'll think of, but anyway, but that person would be solely focused on finding grants, and then working with Amy um in a way that Ruth and Amy decide to apply for those grants. Amy manages all of our grants, so she would be managing those, whether she'll have time to write for them, I don't know, but, but we could include that in the grant contractor role, that they may have to write them up too. But I think that would help us focus on this, because we already have a ton of grants that we have to write for every year, that our staff are already um overwhelmed with trying to keep up. And so, I would like to bring in somebody who is specifically targeted on things that we've had difficulty funding.
The Humane Society.
Humane Society, we need a new animal shelter, that was, thank you, that was the other one. So, um we need to, we need animal shelters, not floods there, you know, um so that's another one, and we'd like to have a location where it's easier to access, so volunteers can get to it better.
And Amy has done a good job on keeping the memorial building going.
Sure.
Um so, Amy.
And the County Commission going.
Well, I would like to agree with Ms. Taylor, I think that the, all the projects that she just named are highly important to our people of Fayette County, they talk, when I, when I speak with people around the county, they ask me about the Four H Park, they ask me about the thing that you've mentioned, the ideas of it, and how, what we plan to do, and I think this is a great step, if we choose to do so, um to, to hire somebody dedicated to it, that can go out and seek funding, that's gonna aid us in to satisfy the needs of the county.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we advertise for a, a grant writer identifier.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have properly moved motion and second, all those in favor?
Ruth, I'll get with you about position description, we can write that together, and Amy. Um criteria for re, I'm sorry, Angela, I need to do another week, the, the fire service stuff, but you, you don't have to have your decisions, you told me like later in the month, so, we'll do it next week. Um I didn't, I could have rushed through it this morning, but I just did not wanna do that. I, I wanna make sure it's comprehensive, and that I don't have any concerns down the road.
Talking about the criteria.
The criteria, I just, we didn't get it in time before next meeting, or last meeting, and then I've really been, you know, trying to get this fire service stuff together for this meeting, because they had a di- a, a deadline of today or tomorrow. So, I promise, I will be ready by next meeting, so I move that we postpone that item, the refunding criteria to next meeting, please.
Second. Got a motion, probably move to second, all those in favor?
Okay, and that reimbursement rate, we're gonna take that up on another day, so I move that we strike that from the agenda for the time being, until um the fire service, the fire service, and I can meet with Ruth and Gia.
You okay with that, Ruth?
Oh yeah, I was just, I think you skipped numbers.
You skipped numbers.
I did, well, I will say, um oh, yeah, yeah, okay, well, all right, I'll, I'll move back to that. Um but I will say that, that I do think, once we do come up with the rate, that we should consider back reimbursement to, to the beginning of the year, uh this calendar year, for uh tax purposes, we don't wanna go beyond that, because it's gonna be a pain for our staff. Um but, so I've let them know that I was gonna recommend that we do that, um even though we're not deciding on it today. So, last thing, we talked last meeting about funding allocation. Move that we strike it from the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second for all those in favor?
We'll get it back on there as soon as we have our meeting. All right, funding allocation for Health Department water testing, we talked about it. I was right, there were no restrictions of the lawsuit, and since I was negotiating on our behalf, um I know I would not have negotiated for for restrictions on how we spend it. Um we have a hundred and thirty-some thousand left, Ruth sent it to me, I don't remember. I'm gonna move that we transfer fifty thousand of that money to the Health Department for water testing, and time being that should cover them for a good while, I talked with Perry Harland, and she did agree to just transfer it over, and they'll, they'll manage it there, rather than us, them bill us.
Testing for where?
Countywide, but also, they're gonna conduct that testing in the valley from the sewage runoff. Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's the priority project, I told her I wanted that done, but then, anybody from Paint Creek, obviously, because it still happened up there, but countywide, it's gonna apply to anybody who wants water testing. So if anybody needs water testing, or has concerns, they should contact the Health Department. If she runs through that fifty thousand dollars, we have more money in the account that we can transfer over later time.
Do we have a motion, probably move to second, everyone, everyone approving?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, granted so.
Second, I'm second to that.